Good evening, it's after five o'clock, we're gonna go in and start our meeting. Ms. Harris, will you do our prayer?
Lord, we're coming for your throne of grace this evening, oh God, just wanna thank you, Lord, for one more day. Lord, we give you glory this afternoon, and we give you praise, you've been so good, and you've been so kind. We thank you for the way you've been blessing West Memphis, oh God. Lord, we lift you up in this city, we lift you up in our community, Lord, we lift you up in this chambers right now, oh God. Look on our mouth, look on the leaders of West Memphis, God. Bless the mind, every department, oh God. Lord, we thank you right now, you've been so good, and you've been so kind, oh God. Lord, we give you glory this evening, oh God, and we give you praise, and we thank you, Lord, for what you've taken in West Memphis. And, Lord, continue, Lord, control that traffic, God. Continue, Lord, to let it flow like it should through, and we thank you right now, oh God. We bless your holy name, oh God. Give us that love that runs from heart to heart and breast to breast, oh God. Tighten us up when we're too loose, loosen us up when we're too tight, God. Bind us together in love and understanding, God. Cover us with your blood, oh Lord, wrap us in your love, oh God. Let your spirit dwell in us and among us, oh God. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Right standing for your flag.
I'll just place the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and ever to be, and ever to be.
I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Mr. City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor McClintock.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suter. Councilmember Bruce.
Here.
Councilmember Kent.
Here.
Councilmember Crone.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Hope.
Here.
Councilmember Hutchinson.
Here.
Councilmember Muhammad.
Present.
Councilmember Monday.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Here.
Councilmember Wheeler.
Here.
We got ten out of ten being present, so we have a quorum. We had no bid openings. What's the correction to the minutes?
Motion previous minute.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes passes. We had no old businesses, um, new businesses, I'm asking you, will you all add an ordinance making Juneteenth a recognized city holiday and observe it for the city of West Memphis? Can I get the motion second to add it to the agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's added to the agenda, so, uh, City Attorney, will you read it for the first time?
All right. This is an ordinance making Juneteenth a recognized city holiday and observe for the city of West Memphis and for other purposes.
Can I pause suspend the rules and place it on the third reading, motion second?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, aye? Opposed? City Attorney, second reading.
An ordinance making Juneteenth a recognized city holiday and observed for the city of West Memphis and for other purposes.
Can I pause to suspend the rules and place it on the third reading?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance making Juneteenth a recognized city holiday and observed for the city of West Memphis and for other purposes.
Can I finally get a motion second to approve?
So moved.
Was there any discussion or conversation about this?
I'm just very, very thankful that this has become a national holiday passed by Congress. It's so beautiful, so long awaited for, and it's just a joy to my soul.
Okay. I know I wrote this ordinance a little over a year ago, and I never had time to place it on the agenda, but I'm just glad that this happened, so that the recognition can be happened.
Mayor, if I may, just to clarify things, this ordinance does not go into effect in thirty days, so we're not looking at this year, we're looking at next year.
It'll be next year, but you know, Juneteenth is Saturday, so definitely, we just wanna make sure this is recognized.
People are celebrating everywhere, so beautiful.
Is there no other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Mr. City Clerk, will you get that O1?
Okay, first, who made the motion, who made the second, 'cause I don't think she... Okay. Okay, that number's gonna be twenty-five eighty-one.
That was the number, it's twenty-five eighty-one. Did we want to do the budget amendment?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to have permission to add a budget amendment to the agenda.
You're gonna hear the second?
So moved.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It was Mr. Kent and Mr. Murray.
I handed this out to everyone, we talked about this at the May twentieth meeting. Ms. Perry has gotten a more accurate number, so we're looking at a increase in revenue of four hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, within the last seven months, last seven months of this year. Best guess, she's within two or three percent, most likely. Half of this will go to AMP, half of this will be, go to the Parks Department, it all goes to AMP, and then Shieldmaker Journal entry, bringing it over into the general fund for the Parks Department.
I just have...
I'd like to do is, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, continue.
Go ahead and ask the council to approve this, since we're already collecting the tax, we can go ahead and get it implemented and injected into the budget. I'll get the city attorney, we're gonna have a resolution drafted for the auditors, and have that on the next agenda. So we'll have a paper trail.
Of course, I'm not the smartest cookie in the jar, but I, the word, I just don't like the word assume. Could we have something more concrete than that word?
I can say approximately, but there is no way, nobody's that good, I mean, I wish they were, and I thank the world of Ms. Perry, but when you're dealing with seventy-three million dollars worth of revenue, she gets within two or three percent, she is by far one of the best I've ever met.
I'm not talking about Ms. Perry, I know she's a wonderful person, I've known her since she was a little girl, she was a student, very A student, all the way through the school, at the school where I am currently employed. It was just that one word, assume, approximately, sounds a little bit better to me, assuming that you're supposing something to be true without any kind of proof, so approximately, to me, sounds better, I don't know what you all, maybe nobody noticed that but me, I just have that kind of...
It's a trend analysis she's done, based off previous data, which fluctuates from month to month, so it is our best estimation of what it will be.
Would you feel better about projected?
Projected sounds good.
Projected.
I can live with that.
Projected sounds better, it sounds better than assume.
Dr. Bruce, you make the, Ms. Muhammad, you and Dr. Bruce make the motion second change, the word assume to project.
Okay, I make a motion that the word, the word is changed to projected.
I'm assume.
Instead of assume.
I second that.
All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the word has been changed from assume to projected, now can I get the motion second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, well, the budget amendment has been done, Councilman Kent, and we'll look for the next one in two weeks.
We'll bring in the resolution, Mr. Murray.
All right. We have no more new business, the permission request, I'm gonna ask you all to disregard this, we're not even gonna move forward with this. Yeah, let me, let me get the motion second to table indefinitely.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? This is table indefinitely. Committee reports, Police Department?
Yes, sir, the Police Department met Monday, June seventh, at twelve oh five. Members President Lorraine Muhammad, Commissioner Willis Monday, Commissioner James Hope, Commissioner Charles Wheeler's, members absent, Commissioner Melanie Hutchinson. Commissioner Willis Monday was voted as vice chair for the meeting, approved unanimously. Our City Clerk James Pulliam shares various laws on having a legal and successful meeting. He brought forth some very good points that, of course, he stated upon and brought from the municipality. Our new, our new Chief Pope brought forth a lot of ideals and, I guess I would say, projections and things of that nature that he would like to see within the West Memphis Police Department. We salute you, Chief Pope, and I want to say to you that God uses small things to bring down giants, always remember that. No matter what giant you're facing, God always uses small things to bring them down. He discussed that the Internal Affairs Bureau, he wants to take that out of the police building, I believe that's what he said, going to take that department out of the building itself, so when people come to discuss various things that has gone on with the police, that they may feel more comfortable in a building that's not really housed inside of the police building itself. His administration is going to be basically zero tolerance, that he's going to be extremely transparent in what goes on within the Police Department. He talked about renaming the intelligence unit, that is still right now a work in progress, no name has been, as far as this last meeting, no name had been generated for that particular unit. He discussed partnering with other law enforcement agencies to help make West Memphis more successful as far as law enforcement is concerned. He talked about establishing a West Memphis SWAT team. He also talked about considering a flock cam, and that's a camera that will basically get license plates more visibly, get the perpetrator sitting inside of the car a little bit more visibly. It's something that's far more technical than our sky cams that we have up now, and that's something that we'll have to get with the Finance Department to see if we have money that's available. His main priority is cracking down on crime in the city of West Memphis and making it a safer place to live for our citizens. He also considered a motorcycle unit, boy, how great would that be, especially for all the speeders that are out there, and that motorcycle, I bet you can catch them, if a car couldn't. So he talked about this, these are things that he's projecting, these are not things that are actually happening at this point, this is something that he would like to do, and without a vision, things perish, so he has a great vision. He also considered a drone unit, which would be something very, very beautiful, especially at the dog track, where there's probably, when the big, 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 big facility is done, it's gonna be more crime, especially inside crime that we could possibly imagine, but he's considering a drone unit. And the evidence room in the Police Department, a lot of us cheered that evidence tour, rather, that evidence room a few years ago, and we know how in disrepair it is, so he's thinking about updating that. I passed by and saw that crooked sign taken down, I said, there he goes. That was great, and I think he's going to be really wonderful. There's Major Stacy sitting beside him, who's a great asset to the Police Department, and basically that is a synopsis of what we talked about, there's so much more, if you want more, you can always refer to the audio that Ms. City Clerk Patricia Lane, who's so very, very dedicated and beautiful, has in her office, just asked her for this particular meeting on this particular date, if you want to hear more about what was talked about. It was very beautiful. The meeting adjourned at twelve forty-nine, and that ends my minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Muhammad, also, Councilman Crone asked me to reintroduce our Chief of Police. Chief Pope, will you stand for a second? He never had an opportunity to meet you, and it says Councilman Crone, he wanted to meet you. Did you need to ask him anything?
No, I went over there and met with him, but I wanted to put, I wanted everybody else to put a face with the name, because that was the first time that I have met with the Chief Pope.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. But I do have a question. Chief, have we occupied those police stations that are built, are combined with the fire stations out at Ponchos or College Boulevard out here?
They're gonna be occupied, those are gonna be the two areas that I'm gonna use for the internal fire unit as well as the drone unit.
Okay.
And they are currently occupied, they are currently occupied.
That is my report.
All right, Public Works?
Public Works, I do have one thing to say on Public Works. And we did a recording of this, but I don't have it in minutes, so I want to read it as I remember it. Last, at our last council meeting on June the third, the Public Works Committee met for a brief time, and we elected a new chair, which is Counselor Garrett Bruce, and a new vice chair, which is Counselor David Murray. So that's why we were saying at the beginning of this meeting that we were gonna defer to him, and he was gonna defer to me, but we, Counselor Bruce is the chairperson for the Public Works Commission now.
Dr. Bruce?
Well, I'm just glad to be here and serve, and if there's anything that I can do for the Public Works Department, please just give me a call.
I would like to say on that, I'm very, very thankful that the street sweepers were on the east end of town. It looks so much better just with the streets being swept, and of course, I will give you a call, because there are some things I have in mind, and I'll just share it briefly here to put it on people's radar, just like we have the various days for picking up garbage and trash per ward. I would like to suggest to the Public Works Department, I can't attend your next meeting, if we could do street sweeping the same way, even if we just swept once a month, it would make the city look so much better. We have all of these new buildings that are going up, which I'm so very, very proud of that, and I give many accolades to our mayor and city council as a whole, but when we had this influx of traffic, guess where they were? Where all the trash on the streets are, where all people are hanging out outside with beer bottles and cans in their hands. People coming from all over America saw West Memphis, that's what they saw West Memphis as. They didn't come down to see all these beautiful things on this end of town, but when they go back, this is, that's what they're gonna talk about, I went through that city and guess what I saw. So I'm so very, very thankful that the street sweepers went through, and if we can get together on that and get a chart or something made up, as we did our sanitation department and our, the trash and the garbage, if we can just get a chart made up where the street sweepers can sweep at least once a month, all of West Memphis.
I'll make sure we bring that up at our next, next meeting, and I'll talk to the director by this way.
Thank you.
Dr. Bruce, that concludes your report.
Well, I didn't conclude all of them, that was just the Public Works.
Oh, okay.
You want me to go ahead and finish these two?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, the West Memphis Chamber Commerce, the, the Chamber met in, on June the ninth in person for the first time out at ASU Miss South, the mayor introduced Police Chief Pope to the Board of Directors, and gave updates on the bridge repairs, the Chamber's helping AMP with attractions for the upcoming Freedom Fest, and they will host the annual awards banquet at the Civic Center on August the nineteenth. Individual tickets are sixty-five dollars per person, tables contain eight people, and unfortunately, you don't get a break, price break for a table, it's still gonna cost you sixty-five dollars a person. And that concludes the West Memphis Chamber of Commerce. The Utility Commission, we had a real busy last few weeks, the agenda for the April minutes were approved as they were written, and so were the agenda minutes for the May and April special meeting. On the safety report, the Safety Director Brett Sims reported that there were two hundred and twelve days since the last recordable injury, and there's been five hundred and ninety-six days since the last lost time injury. Now, I know that sounds like just some numbers to most of us, but I worked in manufacturing for a number of years, and if you can prevent an injury, and especially a lost time injury, you can actually show a savings of a lot of dollars, because going to the doctor and treating on-the-job injuries costs a lot of money. So I think Brett has been doing a really good job in that position of his. Personnel update, the Utility Commission currently has ten open positions out of eighty-three budgeted positions, they had one new hire this last month, and no resignations for the month of May, and the fifth is Todd Peterson updated the commissioners on the fuel adjustment. March amount that needs to be collected was seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars and some change. The amount collected was sixty thousand dollars, and that was based on the history, and the March residential sales were nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars and some change. The April fuel adjustment ended up being point zero one three percent, or cents, on the dollar, and the April amount that needed to be collected dropped to six ninety-eight, the amount collected was three hundred and forty, and the April residential sales were six hundred and eighty-five, eight hundred and sixty-four thousand. The May fuel adjustment turned out to be almost two cents, and per kilowatt, is that right, Todd, per kilowatt hour? Yeah, two percent. The amount that needs to be collected is three hundred and fifty-eight thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars, and the May residential sales were six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Now, the last item, I'm gonna ask our General Manager Todd Peterson to come up and explain this like he explained it to the Utility Commission, it's the approval of the fuel adjustment calculation, and that had to be changed because of the change in our power sources, so Todd, if you would, would you please come up and explain to the council this fuel adjustment calculation, so that we could get a better understanding, and somebody asks us on the street, we'll know what to say.
All right, as y'all know, every month, we calculate our fuel adjustment based, and it's based on our energy cost of what the power cost gets delivered to West Memphis, okay? We are going under a new contract that has different inputs than our old contract. If y'all remember, we actually started June first of this year, our power supply went from being served by Cleco Power to Nextera Power. The bill is going to be different, okay? The cost as a whole will end up being the same, but the way it's structured is different, so we had to change the way the inputs were put in there. If I'd have left it the same, actually, the fuel adjustment you would have seen would have been dramatically higher if I did not change the way it was being calculated. So I went and just changed the modification, and all it is, is the methodology of which it's being calculated. The inputs are still going to be, come directly from the bills, I take the bills, I look at them, and I just put them directly into the fuel adjustment. I went over that real quick, and I can tell you, I, I've had discussions with Ms. Tori about power supply stuff, and, and spanned our new account, and that was the one new hire, and it's very much more complicated than what I just explained, but that is the basics of the fuel adjustment.
Can I ask him a question whilst he's standing up there?
Ms. Harris wants to ask me a question.
It'll have nothing to do with the utilities.
Okay.
You wanna wait until after we get through the commission reports, committee reports?
I'm making him have to come back up here.
Either way, I am fine, I don't mind walking that far.
Okay, all right.
I might need a few extra steps today.
Okay.
With the conclusion of Todd's presentation concludes my reports on the commissions, committees.
Budget, but we basically just did what we need to do, a budget meeting.
Great, we'll meet the fourth Thursday of each month from here on out.
Personnel.
The budget?
Personnel.
Yes, sir, personnel met on June ninth, with, starting out, given a COVID, the COVID update was given by our Emergency Director Dwayne Rose, Community Outreach update was given by Ms. Tawana Bailey, the Workmen's Comp update given by Tori Perry, and of course, our, any HR information reminders, as well as updates were given by Ms. Janice Coleman. The termination report and open positions, we discussed, and if anybody wants those numbers in detail, you can always just get with Ms. Coleman, as well as, we stress the importance of EAP services, which is the program for our employees, and we, I did make a note of saying offering EAP, well, let me go back, the EAP services are available for all of our employees here at the cities, ten free sessions through Methodist Health Systems, and EAP is basically just a program for assistance for, if you, if an employer's demonstrating any concerns that maybe need to be addressed, then we have that as an outlet, and it is free, so it's very important to utilize that, so we did talk about that in detail. That's pretty much it, Mayor, I just wanna, I just hit the highlights, you know, of what we did discuss, and that concludes my report.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hutchinson, the Parks meet? Okay.
Am I missing any of the committees?
I move forward, I spoke with all three of the citizen requests, and I think we have resolved all of our issues right now at this time, so they have left pretty much. Also, I'm gonna give a quick report on the traffic, first of all, you all know that we have went through a lot with this traffic, and I have been out publicly, and I'm still talking and telling anyone that can help us, hear us, speaking with Secretary Boojack from Washington DC, instead of calling, wearing ASA, you know, I do understand that our citizens had to go through a lot, we had eighteen willers coming through our communities, and especially on the east end of town, which, that really affected a lot of individuals, you know, children can come in the front yard because parents worrying about them possibly throwing a ball in the street, you got all these cars and trucks coming here, it affected our tax monies from other cities and other people from other areas that come here to shop simply at our Walmart, our Big Stars, or Krogers, or Chick-fil-A, as well as coming, hopefully, you know, to some of our major facilities. I said, I said the name, you all pretty much know who I'm talking about, so this traffic has been real hard on our city. Now, although it has got better, I wanna thank R. Dot and T. Dot for all their efforts in trying to make the things better, but one thing, instead of talking and pushing Arkansas and ASA, I mean Governor Hutchinson, I'm sorry, is that our streets are going to need to be fixed. I have got an announcement that I think next year, they will start on the east end of Broadway on up, is that correct, Ms. Hicks? Yeah, for Broadway, is they? Overlay program for Broadway, but also, we got a lot of areas right there where service road hits Park Plaza, where people can even get in from work or get out, to go do what they need to do, and that service road is crazy, but then, you know, we had a lot of people coming down, Walker, OK, Den, Thirty Second, Jackson, Thompson, where all those streets on the east end of town, and indefinitely, we are gonna need some type of assistance to make sure that we get out to the streets together, as well as for emergency help and support on that bridge. Now, I want everyone to know that I'll ask some people to be patient, that will hear me, because we one accident away from it, it begging our way back up, you know, I think T. Dot placed the second lane going to the fifty-five, that was great, something I thought that should have been done a long time ago, but okay, I mean, that was done, and we moving pretty smoothly, so I just want people to be cautious in the world when they're going, but know that I'm still on the phone, you know, I'm the type of person, if you tell me something, I expect you to do it, and if something change, I'm gonna call you out on it, so, instead of next week, hopefully, I'll be in Little Rock with Governor Hutchinson, hoping that he can give us some assistance, because we need a lot, definitely when it comes down to emergency resources and, and equipment, to make sure that we are able to do what we need to do, something that we want prepared for, this administration have had to go through two, two, I would say tragedies, because I wanna say, COVID was something we would never could prepare for, who would ever thought one of our bridges would have cracked? Who would ever thought one of our bridges would have cracked and we'd be dealing with that? You know, it really affected the business-wise citizens. So, I mean, you know, a lot of people are pretty much getting back to normal. We still suffering the effect, myself, Mr. Coulter, Ms. Hicks. We rolled around and we looked at some of the, the new drainings that we have been working on. Truck's head roll calls there, some of the curb and gull have been broken and those on city streets. And then I expect for you all to be able to find those parts to get repaired. So I'm just going to ask for a little bailout, a little aid, and I mean, you know, a closed mouth won't get fast. So I don't know what they're going to do, but I just want to make sure that the citizens know that we are doing everything possible in our power to make sure we can get some type of assistance to help in, in all these matters.
Mayor, the street over by Park Plaza is really, really bad. And I talked to the street department about it, they said that wasn't part of their job.
Well, and they absolutely right, Ms. Harris. One thing I want, you all to understand is that College Boulevard was the airport road, Missouri Street, 7th Street, Broadway, Ingram, Dr. Martin Luther King, all of the service road. And Mount City Road, all of those are state highways. So they are the ones that fix those, they just happen to run through the heart of the city. But like I said, Ms. Tudor has been very, she has been very helpful and she said some things she want to try to do to help us. We just got to stay consistent and asking them to be able to assist in taking care of their state highways because I know I got so many called with people saying, well, I can't get into my home. One lady I know walked 10 minutes away from my house and it took her hour and a half to get home. So definitely, you know, with a lot of those streets going to Park Plaza, but not just Park Plaza, on up into the OK Streets and Den's and 32nd Streets. A lot of families from them days really hit it hard, so they're mild streets, but the streets that lead into them were some of the streets from the state. So just going to ask them to help make sure they have a favor on us and send them a turn back month or whatever we can get possible, you know, I can't promise nothing.
And maybe if you stretch that, school buses got stuck and parents calling frantically wondering where their children were because it was an hour before they ever made it home.
Definitely, you know.
I was the one answering the phone and you could hear the terror in their voices. So it impacted not only the citizens, but as you said earlier, the children and everybody.
It's definitely, you know, I wouldn't even mind coming up some type of resolution just to send to the governor when I go to see him, you know. He have sent another saying that he's going to do everything to probably help. And I just believe if you tell me that, I'm going to expect you to be a man of your word. And I'm not saying that he's not, he may do everything he say he going to do, but at this point, I ain't got nothing yet. So I'm still going to continue to ask him as well as the federal level to see what they can do. And I always say, if we're going to build a third bridge, make sure you build it in West Memphis, so.
Put a toll on it.
That's my report on traffic.
Janice, you want to speak on Freedom Fest?
Yes, sir. Freedom Fest is a week from tomorrow, the 25th. Hopefully this weather cooperate, didn't happen at all last year, as y'all know. Pretty much got rained out the last one that we had, 19th. But Freedom Fest is a, I think this is about the 22nd annual event and have a new fireworks company. The one that has, I think has always done it, has retired. And so we're dealing with a new company who comes with pretty good credentials. They do the, what they call the urban shoot at the state Capitol in Little Rock, where it looks like they're coming from top of, behind the state Capitol. So pretty excited about seeing what kind of display they do for us. We've got some good music, food. It's usually a nice turnout. Police Department always estimates around 2,000 to 3,000 to 4,000 people. So I think we're going to have a good crowd and I hope everyone comes out and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to also recognize this week is sanitation, waste pickup week. So just want to recognize the meaning of sanitation department for the job that they do.
Councilwoman Harris?
Todd.
Just a minute.
Okay. What is the process when a utility worker pulls a permit, is working on a house before the time they come out there and inspect it?
Inspection?
Yeah.
I can't talk about inspection, I'm not over that department.
Okay, I talked to the inspector and he said it comes from you. So that's when I asked you, so.
Code enforcement inspection is done by, is done by Paul Luker's department, planning and development.
Right, but they say, he said, you couldn't, he couldn't inspect the utility work until the water work was done and the gas work was done. So I'm just trying to get some clarity on it.
Again, inspection of the construction of the, like the, what's going on in the house and all that, that is done by code enforcement, which is Paul Luker.
Does that, when he come out there to inspect, does he call the inspector to come out to inspect it?
He calls an inspector.
Okay.
When.
When you pull your permit.
Right.
Okay. Does the inspector get a copy of that to know?
I can't, I hate to tell you, because again, if you, if you want to know about taps, for a water meter, I can tell you about that, I do that.
Okay.
As far as inspections, I hate to sit here and say anything publicly because it could be wrong.
Right, he told me, he said, you have to talk to utility. I said, okay, so Todd to be here, so I, so that's why I'm asking.
I'm sorry, ma'am, I can't help you with that, I don't know those answers.
Okay.
Sorry.
Of course, darling, yeah.
Say something.
Yeah.
Ms. Harris, who told you that?
Who told me that? The inspector that's sitting back there in the office, I talked to him when I got.
The inspector told you?
Yeah, he said, utility has to okay them first.
No, I, that's the first I heard anything like that and I've been here for a while.
He just feeling in, so maybe he didn't know.
Maybe he didn't know.
So that's when I told him I wait till Todd get here. He told me the accident, utility department.
Electrical inspection, you got water, you got, you got your drainage system, your plumbing, and all of them are separate, they, they pull permits on all of them separate. So if you pull a permit separate, you can't, you can't go in there and inspect it all at the same time.
That's what I thought.
It's a process, it's a process that you have to go through.
Ms. Harris, is there, is there a matter that we need to try to get handled?
Is there what?
Is there a matter that we need to get handled?
Yeah, I think it need to be handled, some kind of ways.
No, I guess when I'm asking, is it, is it a situation?
Yeah, it was a situation with Mr. Ah.
Okay, what's, sir, will you stand? Could you give me your name and your address real quick so I can get someone out?
Mr. Davis.
I'm with Phil Davis Electric Company.
Excuse me?
Phil Davis Electric Company. I pulled a permit on the 12th and 7th of last week.
Let me, let me get your address.
Oh, 1303 Window Lane.
If that's, is that where you need them out?
No, no, the, the, the address for the, that I pulled a permit for was 728 South 12th Street.
So are you ready for?
Yeah, it was ready.
All right, what I would, what I would do, I would just get in here in the morning and get the inspector to make sure they get a trip out.
Right.
And come out and inspect that, that thing.
Right.
Any time?
I pulled the permit.
Okay.
And that was last, on the 7th. And they told, I mean, I'm sorry, on the 6th, 6th and 10th. And they told me that they'll come out and, you know, and check.
Well, I get them out, I get them out tomorrow for you.
Okay, then, so that's what the problem, but the other thing that need to be said, they said, when you're doing these refilled houses, that they got to have all three permits done at the same time. Well, when you doing electrical work, you might be through before the plumber even get there. So we can't wait and tie your, tie my money up to wait on the plumber. That's what, that's what I was telling Ms. Harris.
For your issue, I find out it's that being done, but for you, I make sure that we get someone out to inspect the.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Is it the plumbing?
No, I'm, I'm electric.
Electric, yeah, inspect the electric.
But he told me that he couldn't do nothing till the water and everything was coming from the.
I get them, I get them out tomorrow, you take it.
I appreciate it.
That's what I was telling him, though.
Was that his first time?
He said he couldn't tell him the lights because the water come on.
Did any, any other council people need to add anything? You all fine? You good? Councilman, actually, did any other council person need to add anything or ask any question? Okay, do you have anything else?
Yes, oh, I have, yeah, I have an announcement. On, on Saturday, we having a celebration, a Juneteenth celebration at the Wonder City Boys and Girls Club. We, we've been having it every year, we were slack last year because of the pandemic. But we celebrating, you know, the, the people in, in Texas was the last ones to get the word about Juneteenth, about being free from slavery. And a lot of our children and a lot of grown folks too don't, don't know about it. It was late getting down there. And, but we want to celebrate this, we want to make a big holiday out of this. Since President has signed into the law, it's time for us to make a big holiday out of this. And this is for the children to understand that their history of where they come from. And I'm supporting this, we're going to have entertainment, we're going to have things for children to do at the boys' club coming this Saturday. We want as many to come out that can. And it's going to be nice, we're going to have music, food and food free for the kids. And it just, we just going to celebrate Juneteenth and I thank God for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, City Clerk?
Yeah, well, can Ms. Coleman, can you come up, Ms. Cole? Uh, what, of course, I was one of, um, wait, Ms. Janice, get it. I have talked with Ms. Coleman, ma'am, I think I brought it to you basically in reference to want to do somewhat, I didn't mention, say briefing with the boss about the USER. USER is the law that governs military employees, I mean, military people that are working for city government and in private sector as well. So I'm one of the representatives and I talked with some people out of Little Rock and they're willing to come down and do a briefing and they like to do it. You know, I'm just saying, like I mentioned before, if we could get all the department here so everyone could understand the law dealing with USER. Because I think the misconception is, I'm talking about forced payment when they go on military leave. So they're more, I mean, they could come down and explain that because, see, I think the way it's been working is not the proper way. And, and so I've already talked with some people out of Little Rock and they're willing to come down. I mean, I could do it myself because I'm certified to do it as well. But I think that's something that definitely need to be done because, you know, in the past, we had a problem when the first, not the first Puerto Rico war, but the second Gulf War that started, we had at least about seven employees to leave to go on military duty, you know, from one of the departments, which we all know that was a headache for us because financially. But the ESGR can do certain things that can help us save money. So that's why I want to come out and do a briefing with the boss so everybody can understand the USER. And I think the more people on board that understand, therefore we can kind of like curtail, you know, just saying losing money.
Well, what we'll do, Ms. Coleman, we'll call another managers meeting and then we'll.
Give us enough time because like I said, they had, I mean, I could do it.
You all supposed to been here.
Well, yes, so, but we're willing to get it done. I mean, like I said, we got people here locally. You know, I'm one and we got two other people here, but we can get it done. And we need, I think we need to do it as soon as possible. That's why, you know, I just wanted to bring it up today.
Okay. We'll take care. Thank you, Ms. Coleman.
Didn't know if you had a question for me, but okay.
Uh, were there any other questions? Here and now, can I get a motion saying to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Second.